All submission of the materials and exhibits.
Twelve noon on Tuesday before the planning board meeting. Please note that as of October 2nd, walk-in speaking signups are no longer permitted. We will now move on with today's agenda. The order of cases for today's meetings are as follows. Item two, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. The next item on the agenda is item two, draft minutes of October 2nd, 2025. I look for a motion.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move on forward to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items four A, four B, four D, and four E. Is there anyone who wishes to oppose the staff recommendations for consent agenda? And if not, is there a motion?
After consideration of the record for item numbers four A, four B, four D through four E, I move adoption of staff findings and approval of the items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of staff.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and I vote aye as well. The regular agenda items. We will now move on to the following regular agenda items. The first item on the agenda is item five, specific design plan, SDP 2501 Saddle Ridge. We will now hear from staff.
Mr. Chairman. David Warner, Principal Counsel. So there are a couple of procedural matters that we need to address before we open the hearing. The first one is a submission from the applicant of some additional testimony that was prepared and, well, it was prepared and submitted after the noon deadline, which normally is not acceptable in, under our procedures and our policy. However, the planning board can allow that testimony into the record if it deems it relevant and necessary for a fair hearing. The applicant has argued that an opponent submitted an objection to the planning board hearing this case, and that was not published until afternoon on Tuesday, I think Wednesday morning. And so they've asked that their written testimony be accepted into the record. And the legal office has reviewed the testimony and has recommended that it is relevant and necessary for a fair hearing to allow it. So I would recommend that the planning board consider a motion to accept this evidence into the record.
We accept your recommendation. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the additional information submitted by Matthew Tedesco by email on Wednesday, October 8th regarding SDP-2501.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
And then the, the second matter is the, is the testimony submitted by the Brandywine TB, Southern Region Neighborhood Coalition. They have filed an objection to the planning board's right to review this case based on the petition for judicial review that they have filed against a separate case, the preliminary plan of subdivision for the same property. And under the planning board's rules, objections and motions and procedural decisions are decided before the hearing, and those are made by you. And we have looked at the testimony of the coalition and Mr. Tedesco's response. And we have agreed with Mr. Tedesco's response that the Maryland rules do not stay your opportunity to hear a different matter because a petition for judicial review was submitted in a separate matter. This has been a longstanding practice of the planning board. And so we would recommend that you deny the objection and proceed to hear the case.
That was a lie.
We don't need to entertain a motion on that.
No. That's a decision for the chair.
Okay. Let's move forward. With that, we will now hear from Mr. Coffield.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Dexter Coffield with the Urban Design Section. The item in front of you is specific design plan SDP-2501 for Saddle Ridge, which proposes architecture only, consisting of nine single-family attached and 19 single-family detached home models. Each single-family attached model ranges in size from approximately 1,500 to 2,582 square feet and varies from two to four stories in height, featuring varied roof lines. Of the nine models proposed, six are front-loaded and three are rear-loaded. The single-family detached models range in size from approximately 1,657 to 5,217 square feet. Several model types offer flexibility in garage, garages designs, garage designs providing either front or side-loaded configurations with options for two or three car garages. These homes featured, these homes feature varied gable roof lines, a range of architectural styles, and quality detailing such as brick jack arches, dormer windows, cornices, column front entries, and transom and side light windows. Both attached and detached models incorporate a mix of exterior materials including brick, stone, multiple siding styles, shutters, specialty windows, and stone or brick water tables. Staff find that this configuration of models, of materials and architectural elements will promote visual diversity while maintaining a cohesive and harmonious character throughout the Saddle Ridge development. Based on this evaluation and analysis, Urban Design Staff recommended the planning board approve specific design plan SDP-2501, subject to the recommend, recommended conditions of approval within technical staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the planning board?
No. I have none.
Seeing none, we will now hear from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Tedesco.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning board. For the record, Matthew Tedesco, on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton Incorporated, here represented this morning by Mr. Matt Muddeman and Mr. Jeff Tockensek. Also with me this morning from Rogers Consulting is Charlie Howell, and virtually on with us from Rogers Consulting is Christine Gillette. And from my office, Dominique Lockard, who's our senior land planner for the project. Want to thank Mr. Coffield, the Urban Design Staff, for their review of this application and recommendation of approval.
Wow, Mr. Tedesco.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
I forgot.
I'm, I'm excited. I was excited to see you.
I was ready to roll.
Let's say, you know, I'm, you're getting me in trouble.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Warner.
I should have been on top of that, too. I, I ask that everyone who is seeking to give testimony or may consider giving testimony, please stand, raise your right hand. This includes everybody online. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Again, picking up where I left off and just having done the introductions, I'm happy to be put under oath with respect to thanking staff for their review. My greatest appreciation for all that your staff does. We all are working very, very hard, as you know, Mr. Chairman, and your staff is no exception. And although this case is fairly straightforward, it is a large project, and there's another application on, on your agenda similarly as this one later on down the agenda. And these are somewhat identical cases, but nevertheless still require a lot of work and review. And I want to thank Mr. Coffield, Ms. Garland, and Ms. Connor, and all the development review sections for their review. This project has a fairly lengthy history, going back more than four years, back to the basic plan, which rezoned the property to the RS and then ultimately the LCD zone. The comprehensive design plan was approved by this board in 2023 for 954 units. The specific design plan for infrastructure only was approved in 2024. That included the roads, stormwater facilities, utilities, et cetera. More recently, the preliminary plan of subdivision was approved for 783 lots and 97 parcels, comprising of 534 single-family detached lots and 252 single-family attached, for a total of 786. What you have before you this morning is an umbrella architectural SDP. We still have to come back before you, and we will be back before you before the year, the end of the year, with the phase one or phase two SDPs for this and both Dobson Farms. This application is just an overarching umbrella architectural plan, not typically done with comprehensive design zone projects, with some exceptions. These larger projects, oftentimes the builders like to have an umbrella architectural plan set approved. And then as we get into the more details of the SDP itself or the phases, we'll come back and we'll show those specific models. But this will set the standard for the overall development. That's why you have a plethora of model types and options. And as Mr. Coffield indicated, many of which provide varying architectural features. And then to include recommended conditions of approval that the applicant has agreed to, to ensure not only variety of materials, but also architectural features. To include, we've agreed to remove the elevations that have all siding as the front elevations. We've agreed to making sure we have a development chart that includes the 60% townhome facades will have full, full brick. Three enhanced design features for all high visible end units, including a water table. We do believe, and your staff has found, that the application is consistent with the required findings of the zoning ordinance. All findings of fact, are, facts are provided. There are a total of 28 model types. Conditions ensure design variation, material richness, and avoidance of repetition. The SDP satisfies section 27-528, 275, uh, 480, standards for specific design plans. It is entirely consistent with your prior approvals of both the basic plan, the CDP, and the preliminary plan of subdivision. And for all those reasons, Mr. Chairman, we would submit on the record the justification statement that, that was provided in your backup and respectfully request that this application be approved and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tedesco?
No questions.
Seeing none, and I don't think there is no one in opposition. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve.
Excuse me, I'm signed up to speak.
There's a speaker.
Okay. All right. Any more?
I'm Camita Gray.
Camita Gray.
Okay, Ms. Gray.
Okay, Ms. Gray.
Um, and I just want to clarify earlier on the testimony, that objection was only submitted for the record, not as a formal objection.
Okay. You have two minutes.
Um, Camita Gray, individual and the president of the BTB Coalition. Both Saddle Ridge and Dobson Farm are before the Circuit Court for Prince George's County. Any action on the specific design plans is premature and outside proper jurisdiction. Because the underlying preliminary plans are still being litigated, staff cannot presume these findings are final or valid. The specific design plans approvals are derivative of the preliminary plans now under judicial review. Proceeding today will prejudice the outcome of the case and undermine judicial authority. The staff reports also on certi, on certifications adequacy. The same paper adequacy determination is now being challenged under CR 80 and CB 29. You cannot separate the architecture from the adequacy. It is built on the same flawed foundation. Most concerning, the reports falsely state that no community comments were received. That's factually incorrect. Reconsiderations, filings, affidavits, and sworn testimony from our coalition were submitted, timely stamped and entered into the record before reports were finalized. To ignore this is to create an outcome, an incomplete record, and deny public participation guaranteed under Maryland law. Further, the hearing schedule was altered so that walk-ins adjustment after my submission to change made after community filings undermined fair notice and participation rights under section 10 of the planning board. It deprives the public of judicial procedure and creates an appearance of biased inclusion and Title VI retaliation. Finally, both reports are vitally identical, cut and paste analysis of the same H E R I, H E R S language, and the same conditions, and no individual environmental traffic equity review. This is not professional due diligence. This is procedural irregularity, 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 and the breach of public trust. For these reasons, I request respectfully that these be deferred or denied until judicial review is resolved and the administrative record corrected and the integrity of the public participation restored. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Is Mr. Mark Calhoun in? Seeing none. Tamara Brown online. She's not here. Uh, I believe that concludes all those that would like to speak. Is there a motion? Oh, thanks, yeah.
Final.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Just some response to Ms. Gray's testimony. I, I think 99% of it's moot, given the fact that the board has already ruled on the request to either postpone or remove this item from the agenda. But I would just note for the record that Maryland Rule 7-205, the filing of petition for judicial review, quote, "does not stay the order or action of the administrative agency," close quote. Similarly, section 10-222E1 of the state government article of the annotated code provides, quote, "The filing of a petition for judicial review does not automatically stay the enforcement of the final decision. Where the law is unequivocal, the planning board's final decision in the preliminary plan of subdivision remains in full force and effect. Therefore, the planning board retains jurisdiction and must proceed, and has already determined to proceed with, with this hearing this morning." With that, Mr. Chairman, again, we would respectfully request that this application be approved. Thank you.
You, board members, are there any deliberations? And if not, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve SDP-2501, subject to the condition as outlined in staff's report.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and I vote aye as well. We will now move on to the next agenda item, item number six, preliminary plan of subdivision, PPS-2024-010, Covington Oaks, Mr. Bartlett.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the boards. For the record, I'm Jason Bartlett with the subdivision section. Item number six on the agenda is preliminary subdivision, PPS-2024-010, titled Covington Oaks. This subdivision proposes one parcel for 48 two-family dwelling units. The property lies in the residential multifamily 20 zone and is located on the north side of Elder Oaks Boulevard, approximately 300 feet east of its intersection with Excalibur Road. The development proposes two full movement vehicular access points along Elder Oaks Boulevard, which is a local primary residential roadway. This application is further supported by an approved certificate of adequacy, Staff has not received any exhibits or correspondence prior to the noon deadline on October 7th, 2025. In conclusion, based on the findings presented in the technical staff report, staff recommends the planning board approve this preliminary plan of subdivision, PPS 2024-010, and type one tree conservation plan, TCP 1-2025-0023, subject to the findings and conditions in the technical staff report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Bartlett? And then we will now hear from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Tedesco. Before you speak.
I wasn't gonna mess up twice.
We have seven invisible signups to speak, so if you couldn't speak, stand, raise your hand. Anybody online as well? Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Uh, good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Tedesco, Law Firm, here on behalf of the owner and applicant, Collington Place LLC, which is a subsidiary of the Kalivus Group, represented this morning by Mr. Andy Kalivus, who's here with us. We also have Mark Ferguson from Site Design, Mike Lenhart from Lenhart Traffic Consulting. Online, we have Brian Messino from Schaefer Homes, and Dominique Lockard from my offices online as well. We also have a couple of residents from the city of Bowie, from the Covington Oaks area, who, I, I know one of whom will at least be speaking this morning. And I want to thank both of them, Lisa and Dwayne, for being here as well. I would ask just for the board's indulgence, because there's a little bit of a story here and a history, and I won't belabor it too long. But it bears repeating with respect to how we got here on this particular property. This property has entitlements going back to 1975. The sectional map amendment for the Bowie area, area at that time, rezoned this property and adjoining property, both LAC and RS, both comprehensive design zones. And then late 80s, early 90s, there were numerous amendments to that basic plan for the development that is now the Collington area. In 1994, the CDP was approved. In 1994, also, the preliminary plan of subdivision was approved. As it relates to this property, and just off your screen to the north, you can kind of see the, the property to the plan view northeast, or excuse me, northwest, which is a multifamily building. There's some multifamily to the south as well. All of it was all part of a comprehensive design plan and development. At that time, for this parcel and the parcel to the north, it was approved for 20,000 square feet of commercial retail, as well as 220 multifamily units, which were built just off to your, this image on your screen to the north. In 2006, the Bowie SMA rezoned this property from the LAC zone to the CO zone. In 2022, when the countywide map amendment went into effect, this property went from CO to CGO. At that time, as we all know, the zoning ordinance, the new zoning ordinance went into effect. And it contemplated and envisioned a number of different uses within the CGO zone. One of the more popular uses was consolidated storage. Since, at that time, there were a number of projects and properties that went in for consolidated storage pursuant to the CGO zone. Our elected leaders weren't too pleased with that, and they changed the law with CB 11 2023. This property was one of many where Mr. Kalivus, who's been the owner of this property for more than 15 years, had a contract, had, had a deal in place with a consolidated storage. Given what was occurring in 2023 with the ire of a lot of those uses coming into the CGO zones, particularly in this, in this CGO zoning, where there's a number of residential in the area, it probably would have been a good use in the sense that there's a lot of residential. However, the community was, did not believe so and did not agree. Mr. Kalivus, at great expense and, and, you know, potential loss of revenue, stopped and listened, and I shouldn't mention, Mr. Kalivus is a Prince Georgian. His whole born and raised, lives in Upper Marlborough, very local, ties to the community, heard the community's outcries, heard the political outcries, and, and ultimately walked away from that, from that transaction. What occurred thereafter, Mr. Chairman, was collaborative, collective, for not only on behalf of my client, Mr. Kalivus, but Ms. Babbin, who is a representative of the community who's here this morning, as well as the local elected leaders at the city of Bowie and our county elected leaders, resulted in what we now have. We had an opportunity from 2023 to 2024 with the Bowie Sector Plan that was, that was adopted in March of 2022 to rezone the property as part of the SMA for the Bowie area. And that commenced with a very long, two-year process, working with the community, working with all the stakeholders, to come up with, okay, if it's not going to be CGO and if it's not going to be consolidated storage, what, what is it that everybody can live within, and what, what does everybody want? And what resulted in that was an effort, a collective effort, because Ms. Babbin also testified at various hearings on behalf of the, her community with respect to the Bowie SMA, and the property was purposely rezoned to the RMF 20, specifically to facilitate this development. It was a collaborative effort from the applicant, from the community, from the city, as well as from your planning department, to revision this area from its 40-year history of what it was intended to be with commercial uses that were just no longer viable or supportable by the community. And so with CR 84 2023 Amendment 7, this property was rezoned to RMF 20, agreed upon by the community stakeholders, the council, to allow two-over-twos as that zoning will advance the county's housing and reinvestment goals. Specifically, the SMA, and I'll quote, "It provides, 'The need for commercial office land use at this location is no longer desired, especially by the community, and would unnecessarily compete with the existing shopping centers. Instead, rezoning to the RMF 20 will help preserve the character of the neighborhood and will help support nearby commercial nodes with increased housing.'" That's at page 90. Mr. Bartlett provided a, a brief summary, but I will say that the staff report is excellently written. We agree with all of its findings and conclusions. We have no requests or recommendations, changes to any recommended conditions. Density that's proposed here is half what would otherwise be allowed. Two-over-two family units at this location is both context-sensitive infill development that facilitates new home ownership and competitive price point, at competitive price points while competing with, while, excuse me, while complementing the surrounding neighborhood. The application meets all technical, environmental, and planning requirements. It meets all the required findings of subtitle 25, subtitle 27. And we will be back before you just in two weeks on the detailed site plan. I, I will close by just mentioning there have been numerous, I didn't want to go through all of them by date, but there have been numerous meetings with the community. I want to thank again Lisa and Dwayne for their leadership. We've got, I've gotten to know them personally, and I consider them friends. It's been wonderful working with them, and we look forward to bringing this development online, and we have them to thank, and I just want to publicly thank you both for your leadership and your efforts. Also, the city of Bowie, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. We had a city council hearing with them just this past Monday night. It was a unanimous recommendation of approval for both this preliminary plan and the detailed site plan. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I, I humbly and respectfully request this board's approval of this application, and we definitely look forward to being back before you in two weeks on the detailed site plan for the architecture. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tedesco?
I just have one. Thank you, Mr. Tedesco. When you refer to them as a two-family unit, you're talking about two separate units as opposed to one unit where a person can buy one and rent out the other?
Correct. Yeah, these would be, so it's, it's, it's under the zoning ordinance definition, two-family attached, also a two-over-two unit, so you have a ground floor unit that's two, two levels, and then an upper floor level, that's two levels. Those will be condominiumized, so they'll be owner-occupied. But they will be, they won't be, what you're explaining, they'll be actual owner, owner-occupied of the ground floor, two levels, owner-occupied of the top two levels. And we'll get into this in the detailed site plan. The upper level unit is a little bit larger than the lower, but the lower has a ground floor living option, which, you know, tries to fit a various market need for the owners. But yeah, they will be owner-occupied.
Fair. I, I raise it because I've seen, in this area, I'm from the northeast, and it's usual to have two and three-family houses where somebody buys the house and then is able to afford the house because they can rent out the second floor or the third floor. So, okay, so these are more two-over-twos.
These would be, these will be two-over-twos. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I know that we have, we will now hear from those that have signed up to speak. I believe all are in favor, but one would like to speak, and that's Ms. Lisa Babbin. Yes, swear in there?
She did.
Oh, okay. It's me.
Good morning, Chair Barnes and, and the Prince George's County Planning Board. My name is Lisa Babbin, and I live at 16402 Ider Street in Bowie, Maryland, which is a part, one of the five subdivisions that's a part of the Covington subdivision. The journey to get to 3610 Elder Oaks Boulevard has been a two-and-a-half-year feat for our community. One word describes Covington Oaks for me, and that is community engagement and sustainability. The new subdivision, which will break ground in December of 2026, will be an environmentally sustainable, will be environmentally sustainable because the construction will protect the natural environment in our community and maintain natural resources like a creek that's nearby. It's also socially sustainable because it will allow Covington to continue to be a walking and recreational community that allows those that presently live here and those in the future to grow. It is also economically sustainable because the price point will allow young people to be able to become new homeowners and even elders to purchase homes. For instance, elders will be able to age in place with certain models that are like ground level and where all of the important things are on the first level. In addition, In addition, it will improve our standard of living by increasing property values of the condos, townhouses, and single-family communities in the Covington community. And for this, the Covington community supports the construction of Covington Oaks. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Babin?
No, thank you.
I don't believe there's anyone else coming to testify. Mr. Tedesco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing further. And again, I just want to thank Lisa. I didn't neglect to just mention one other thing. The name Covington Oaks, we give credit to the community because they're the ones that chose that name, so it was, again, I just, I know I'm beating a dead horse here, but it was a truly two-year, two-and-a-half-year collaborative effort with this, and where we started to where we finished is just testament of this particular developer working with the community, and I'm just honored to be able to represent this project. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This hearing is now closed. Members, are there any deliberation? If not, wish you good luck.
Just congratulations to all. It's really nice when it all comes together like this. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan, PPS dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-TCP one dash two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-two-three. Stick to the conditions as outlined in staff's report.
Second?
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and David, I vote aye as well. We will now move on to the next agenda item, item number seven, preliminary plan of subdivision, PPS dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-zero-eight Melwood Hills. We will now hear from staff, Ms. Monor.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, I'm Salmin Monor with the subdivision section. Item number seven on the agenda is preliminary plan of subdivision, PPS dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-zero-eight, titled Melwood Hills. The subdivision proposes twelve lots and three parcels for the development of twelve single-family detached dwellings. The property isn't the residential rural and military installation overlay zones and is located approximately three hundred and fifty feet south of the intersection of Antoc Place and Dour House Road at the terminus of Matthew Road and Dour House Road. The proposed development will be accessed via proposed public roads, including Dour House Road and Matthew Road. The subdivision proposal includes requests for a variance for specimen tree removal as evaluated on pages seventeen through twenty of the staff report. This application is also supported by an approved certificate of adequacy, ADQ dash two-zero-two-three dash zero-three-two. Staff has not received any exhibit or correspondence prior to the noon deadline on October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. In conclusion, staff recommend that planning board adopt the findings of the technical staff report and approved preliminary plan of subdivision, PPS dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-zero-eight, type-one tree concentration plan, TCP one dash two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-two-one, and variance to section twenty-five dash one-two-two B one G for removal of specimen trees subject to the conditions in the staff report. This concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
Great job. Any questions of staff?
I have none.
Seeing that, we will now hear from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Heller, before you.
I have a start.
I like it.
Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please stand, raise your right hand. Those online as well. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. For the record, Thomas Heller, I'm attorney with offices here in Largo on behalf of the property owner, the applicant. I do want to thank staff for their work on this application. We are in agreement with staff's recommendation and the recommended conditions on the line as well as our architect with the lead engineering, and my client is observing online as well. I do want to note very briefly, this is a little bit of an unusual subdivision in that we're taking twelve lots and reducing it to, excuse me, seventeen lots and reducing it to twelve. So, this is actually a reduction. We're increasing the tree conservation on the property from zero acres to about three-and-a-half acres. The two things that I did want the board to be aware of is if you look at the aerial photograph, you'll see a driveway that runs through the property. That driveway was originally created by an easement in nineteen seventy-five and is to the benefit of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission as it leads to the Melwood Hills Park, which is to the south of this property. When this property was originally subdivided in the late nineteen eighties, that right of way was dedicated to public use, but it's never been improved beyond a twenty-four-foot driveway. So, as this property develops, that driveway will now be improved to public road standards with sidewalks and a shero on the road as well. The other thing I wanted to note is that when the property surrounding us was subdivided, there was a trail connection that was constructed to the park, and somehow that part of that trail got constructed on this property, even though it was not supposed to be. So, as part of the development of this property, a public use easement will be established, and that property will be conveyed to the homeowners association, so the trail will be maintained and will be properly located and protected by an easement. So, the development of this property will help to enhance the area by improving access into the Melwood Hills Park. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have and appreciate the opportunity to present to you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Heller?
Thank you, Mr. Heller. So, I'm not understanding the process because this is actually my first meeting to this type of hearing, but I do live in the neighborhood, and if I'm allowed to ask questions, because I didn't know about your protocols for asking questions, understanding of assignment, I wouldn't know that. The only reason is that we walk in the mornings and it's deep and the woods are, you know, normally no one sees, but we're just nosy like that, so we wanted to know what was on the side. Because it's not like you see it from the place that we walk. So, am I allowed to ask questions? Of course not.
I like that. Mr. Chair, Sherry Connor for the record.
I'd be happy to speak with you following this meeting and answer your questions.
I would as well, yes.
Thank you.
I'll be able to speak?
No, ma'am.
They just told me about that because it was a lack of communication, not a seat, and it didn't have any sign. The people came here today just to try to express their opinion.
Yeah, I think what was already articulated that staff will be willing to speak for you guys once this concludes. Thank you.
Ma'am, in terms of this meeting, the outcome of this meeting, I'm just tired of developments moving into the area, and they're running all over the property because they know what they have to call it. The traffic, we have children in the area, they have to watch out.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman can't accept testimony.
That's correct.
I just need to express it. It's never been allowed to be expressed.
I know, because it wasn't clear on the sign.
Yeah, I think everything is on our website, so I think, I understand, right? So, going forward, I think everything is on our website. Staff will be here to answer any other questions. Mr. Heller, who is the attorney, will also be here to answer any of you all's questions and/or concerns. I see that there is no one in opposition that have signed up prior to this. Are there any other questions, Mr. Heller? Seeing none, board, what's your pleasure?
And I'll make the most, Mr. Chairman. I would also like to say for those who've shown up, this is just one step in the process, so please take advantage of the opportunity to chat with our staff, who will explain their next steps that will come, where you can, are able to speak and be a person of record. With that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan, PPS dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-zero-eight, TCP one dash two-zero-two-five dash zero-zero-two-one, and variance to section twenty-five dash one-two-two B one G, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report.
Second, and I would also note that as well that the community came here, but pay attention, there'll be other development that'll be going on, and you'll see signs, and you sign up, you could give our staff your name, address, and phone number for you to be contacted and to receive mail.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. The ayes have it. We will now move on to the next agenda item, item number eight, specific design plan, SDP dash two-five-zero-three Dobson Farm. We will now hear from staff.
Mr. Chair, just in the, the procedural process, we're saying that this is a separate item, that's to take the same steps that we took with item number five. First step would be, the same reasons.
It is stated in item number five, the applicant has requested that written testimony submitted afternoon on Tuesday be accepted into the record, and I also recommend that the board accept such testimony for the same reasons that we stated in item number five.
That requires a motion.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the additional information submitted by Matthew Tedesco by email on October eighth for SDP dash two-five-zero-three into the record.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. The ayes have it.
On the second matter, I know that in the.
Item number five, Ms. Gray said that she wasn't objecting to the consideration, wasn't filing a formal objection, but the letter itself says it's a formal objection, so I don't want to ignore the procedural process that applies to that testimony. So, for the same reasons, I would recommend that the chair deny her objection and hear this case.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Meyerholtz.
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the planning board. For the record, my name is David Meyerholtz with the urban design section. Item eight is specific design plan, SDP dash two-five-zero-three for Dobson Farms, which proposes architecture only consisting of nine single-family detached and nineteen single-family detached home models. Each single-family attached model ranges in size from approximately fifteen hundred to two thousand five hundred eighty square feet and varies from two to four stories in height, featuring varied roof lines. Of the nine models proposed, six are front-loaded and three are rear-loaded. The single-family detached models range in size from approximately sixteen hundred to fifty-two hundred square feet. Several model types offer flexibility in garage design, providing either front or side-loaded configurations with options for two or three-car garages. These homes feature varied gabled roof lines, a range of architectural styles, and quality detailing such as brick jack arches, dormer windows, cornices, columned front entries, and transom and side light windows. Both the attached and detached models incorporate a mix of exterior materials, including brick and stone, a variety of siding types, shutters, specialty windows, and masonry water tables. Staff find that this combination of materials and architectural elements will promote visual diversity while maintaining a cohesive and harmonious character throughout the Dobson Farms development. Based on this evaluation and analysis, urban design staff recommend that the planning board approve specific design plan, SDP dash two-five-zero-three, subject to the recommended conditions of approval within the technical staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Meyerholtz?
I have one.
Seeing none, we will now hear from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Tedesco, but before you speak.
I ask that all people willing to speak or wishing to speak, raise their right hand, including everyone online, please, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and my apologies, I was out in the hallway dealing with the prior two matters. For the record, Matthew Tedesco with the Law Firm of Macamie Hosee here on behalf of the applicant, Dr. Horton Incorporated. As referenced before in agenda item number five, we have representatives of Dr. Horton here, as well as representatives of Rogers Consulting here with us this morning. Want to thank Mr. Meyerholtz for their review of this application. Similar to the last case, this application is a comprehensive design zone that was rezoned to facilitate the proposed development. It's got a long history, actually going back to the nineteen sixties and seventies as a golf course, surface mining operation, sand and gravel, et cetera. In two thousand and twenty-one, we embarked upon the rezoning, having a basic plan, eight dash one-zero-zero-five-nine-C approved to rezone the property to the RS zone that later became the LCD zone. All of these applications are being reviewed under the prior zoning ordinance pursuant to section twenty-seven seventeen oh four. More recently, in two thousand and twenty-four, this board approved a comprehensive design plan, CDP twenty-two zero-zero-two, for the development of one thousand one hundred and six dwelling units. Last summer, June two thousand and twenty-four, a specific design plan for infrastructure was approved by this board, and more recently in July of this year, the preliminary plan of subdivision, four dash two-four-zero-one-four, was approved for one thousand twenty-four lots and one hundred and forty parcels. As the Saddle Ridge project, this SDP is an umbrella architectural plan. We will have subsequent SDPs for the actual phase development with more details provided at that time, but this provides the overall overarching architecture for the project. It does follow the same recommendations and conclusions in your staff report that we agree with. It does provide similar conditions of approval that outline requirements to better enhance the architectural features, including sixty percent full-brick facades, removal of non-brick units, et cetera, and we have agreed to all of those conditions as recommended by staff. And we would further incorporate and adopt as our testimony the justification statements as well as the plethora of information and backup material that are in your record in fully supportive of this application. It does meet all the required findings and prior conditions of approval, and we would respectfully request the board's approval in this case, and we would happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tedesco?
None.
Seeing none, we will now hear from those that have signed up to testify, I believe, in opposition. Ms. Kamita Gray.
Good morning, planning board and chairman. For the record, my name is Kamita Gray individually and as the president of the Brandywine TV Southern Region Neighborhood Coalition. I do want to clarify that my objection was in the subject line, formal objection for the record, not a formal objection for a hearing, to clarify that point. I hereby adopt and reinstate the same testimony previously given under agenda item number five for Saddle Ridge, SDP two-five-oh-one, as it applies equally and in full to agenda item number eight, Dobson Farm, SDP two-five-oh-three. The issues, the procedural defects, and the legal context are identical. Both projects are under judicial review on the Circuit Court for Prince George's County, both rely on the same preliminary plan and certifications of adequacy. And now being challenged, and both staff reports miss and state the record by claiming no community comments were received, let the record reinforce the need for corrective action and federal oversight. Therefore, I stand on the same testimony word for words, requesting that this item likewise be deferred or denied until judicial review is resolved and the administrative record corrected. Thank you respectfully.
Are there any questions for Ms. Gray?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, Ms. Tamara Brown. Seeing that she is not here, Mr. Tedesco, you're invited.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I would just highlight that under Maryland Rule seven dash two-zero-five, the filing of a petition for judicial review, quote, "does not stay the order or action of the administrative agency," close quote. Section ten dash two-two-two E one of the state government article, the annotated code, provides that, quote, "The filing of a petition for judicial review does not automatically stay the enforcement of the final decision," close quote. Therefore, the law is unequivocal, the planning board's final decision in the preliminary plan of subdivision, four dash two-four-zero-one-four, remains in full force and effect, and therefore the planning board retains jurisdiction and must proceed with this consideration of this SDP. And for all the previously stated reasons, as well as supported by your staff, we would respectfully request the approval of this umbrella architectural SDP.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tedesco? Seeing that members are, any other deliberation? If not, wish your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve SDP dash two-five-zero, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report.
I second, and I would also like to thank the. I second, and I would also like to thank the, uh, the developer. For agreeing to the changes recommended by staff and enhancing the appearance of the, uh, townhouse units.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. The ayes have it. Thank you so much. We will now move on to the next item on the agenda, item number nine. Community planning division priority funding area designation. We will now hear from staff.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the planning board. My name is Justin Thornton. And in studies section of the community planning division. I am joined by Keir McKune, supervisor of the master plan and studies, study section. This is a request to approve correspondence to the county executive and the county council requesting they sign. A joint letter to the Maryland Department of Planning for an amendment of the state priority funding area. To include the First Baptist Church campus, including a future senior affordable housing development. Also called the Grove of, in, at Glen Arden. Next, aye. So first, what is a priority funding area? First, smart growth legislation was enacted in nineteen ninety-seven to direct state spending to areas targeted for growth. Second, PFAs are existing communities and places designated by local governments. Indicating where they want state investment to support future growth. Third, PFA designation provides access to state funding, including water and sewer infrastructure. Transportation facilities, housing, business development tax credits and neighborhood revitalization. And fourth, PFAs encourage state and local government coordination. As you can see on the map on, to the left, the current PFA is within the county's growth boundary and supports the intention depicted in Plan twenty thirty-five. Growth policy map. Amendments to the PFA are carefully considered to maintain targeted investment of limited state and county resources. Next, aye. I will now give an overview of the PFA process. The First Baptist Church of Glen Arden requested to be included in the PFA. The planning department reviewed the request from First Baptist and found that the site, the site meets the criteria. For PFA designation and is consistent with the Plan twenty thirty-five strategies, goals and policies. Now that staff has reviewed the requests, it is now being presented to the planning board for approval. If approved, the planning board will sign a letter requesting the county executive and council chair sign the joint letter. From there, there, the Maryland Department of Planning will review that request. Drafts of each letter are included with the backup materials. Next slide. The PFA designation requ- request includes the parcels that comprise the First Baptist Church of Glen Arden's property. On the south side of the property, the Grove will be constructed. In twenty twenty-one, a special exception was granted. For the construction of the senior affordable housing, uh, development that would enable the Grove to be built on this partial. As mentioned before, the Grove and First Baptist Church meeting, the employment related criteria of the priority funding area. And matches the Plan twenty thirty-five and the Bowie master plan. Next slide. If the planning board approves the requests, letters signed by Chair Barnes will be sent to the county executive. And council chair requesting they sign a joint letter to the Maryland Department of Planning. If both parties approve and sign on, the joint letter will be transmitted with related documentation to the Maryland Department of Planning for review. The Maryland Department of Planning will review for compliance with the PFA designation criteria. If it is determined that the designated PFA satisfies the criteria. The Maryland Department of Planning will send a PFA concurrence letter within thirty days. If the Maryland Department of Planning determines that the designated area does not meet the criteria. Then the Maryland Department of Planning will classify this area as a PFA comment area on the department's, uh, PFA map. This classification communicates that the area has been designated locally. However, it is determined by the department that it does not meet one or more of the PFA requirements. This concludes staff's presentation. And now I would request, staff requests the approval of the proposed correspondence. And send those correspondence to the county executive and county council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Uh, are there any questions from the planning board?
I have one.
Uh, seeing none, uh, and no one is in opposition, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt staff recommendations and transmit the proposed. Priority funding area amendment correspondence related to First, uh, Baptist of Glen Arden to the county council and the county executives.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. This concludes, uh, all items on today's agendas. I'd like to thank the staff for, for today. It is now eleven oh two and the meeting.
Okay.